Okay, welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee meeting this Tuesday morning. We do have a 9:30 agenda joint with HMS and as soon as Chair Sam Blaimen sure gets here, we'll go ahead and start with that. My name, but for the moment, we'll start, we'll start on our 931 agenda. My name is Paul Rhodes and Chair of the Committee, the Judiciary Committee. This meeting at YouTube livestream event will include the following agendas. The 930 agenda, as soon as Chair Sam Blaimen sure gets here, then we have a JDC agenda 931 and then we have a CPN slash JDC agenda at 10. But it's not in this room, it's upstairs and it's a different Zoom link, so complicated day. Hearings being live streamed live on YouTube, you can find links to viewing options for all Senate hearings and meetings on the live and on demand video page for the legislation website. If you're interested in writing, seeing the written testimony, you can go to the legislation website at capital dot Y dot gov, capital O. If we have a major technical meltdown, we will reconvene on Thursday the 24th to 10/25 in this room at a video conference. If people testify remotely, your testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until it's your turn to testify. And we do have a two minute timeline on testifying. If you can't hang around though, members often have questions for you, so if you can be here for that, that would be great. Okay, so we will go ahead and start on the 931 agenda. First up on 931 is HB 980 relating to adult protective services. This was a proposed SD posted to broaden the Department of Human Services' right to entry without a warrant. First up on 980 is Kathy Betts, Director for Department of Human Services.
Not present, Chair.
In support. Next is Human Services again, still in support. Marilyn Yamamoto opposed Lynn Morikami Akatsuka in support. Gerald Silva in opposition, Madison Smith in support. That's all the written test, that's all the testimony we have on HB 980 and there's no one to ask questions of, so let's go ahead and move on to HB 1536. This is the Judiciary Supplemental Budget. First up for HB 1536 is Tom McCall, Senior Planning Director for the Judiciary. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair, K O, Kaloli, and three members. Since you just heard and passed out five weeks ago, the Senate Companion Bill SB 2113, which is basically the same as this bill. Except this bill has an additional $1 added as a placeholder for civil legal services. The judiciary will stand on its written testimony in support and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Figueroa for the Volunteer Legal Services Hawaii.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee on Judiciary. Mary Mies Wage Figueroa, Executive Director, Volunteer Legal Services Hawaii, testifying in support of House Bill 1536. And respectfully request an amendment to the proposed Judiciary Supplemental Budget to include the purchase of services contract for general civil legal services. I sign on my written testimony and I'm available for questions later. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, now that Chair Sam Blaimen sure is here, I will recess the 931 agenda and we will, if you're ready, we'll go to the mic.
We are ready.
To the 930 agenda, first up, I'm sorry, for the 930 agenda, we have one bill. It is HB 1759, appropriates funds to the judiciary contract with nonprofit organizations to provide legal counsel and assistance to low income immigrants. First up on 1751 is Patricia McManaman for Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights. Don't see her, she's in support. There you are. Good. Good morning. You're muted. I'm listening.
Good morning, Chair. My apologies. We stand in full support of this measure. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And next is Liza Ryan Gill, Co-Chair Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. Oh, you're here. Okay, good morning.
Good morning. Well, that's Chair Rhodes and Chair Sam Blaimen sure, and Members of the Committee, Liza Ryan Gill with the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights, representing more than 25 immigrants serving our immigrant-led organizations across the state. We stand in strong support of this bill. And just to note, for folks that have not spent time in watching or being in a courtroom at deportation proceedings, you are not entitled to an attorney. And so if we all remember the crisis at the border and three and four year olds having to represent themselves against an ICE-appointed lawyer. This is why that happens. In the state, they are required to give them a piece of paper that gives them options for low, or pro bono or low bono attorneys that they could contact. Currently, that piece of paper is blank. We only have a handful of attorneys here in the state that offer any type of services to our low-income immigrants to help them adjust status. It is very, very difficult to have a successful case without some type of help. So this is why we're in strong support. More than 18% of our state is foreign-born and it stands to our own benefit to make sure that people have access to justice. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next is Corey Park, President of Legal, Legal Company.
Not present, Chair.
In support, followed by Rodney Miley for the Judiciary in support. Craig Arri, Director of Department of Budget Finance with comments. Department of Human Services is in support. Giovanni Domingo De La Cruz for Hawaii Office of Community Services in support. Catherine Chen with the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights in support. John Bickel for Americans for Democratic Action in support. Rob Van Tassel, President, CEO of Catholic Charities Hawaii in support. El Basha in support. Daddy is fam in support. Gerard Silva in opposition, and that's all the testimony we have on HB 1759. Members, questions? I have a question for, I guess, well. Gill or Ms. McManaman. One or both of you testified that you would like to, why don't you come back up?
I think you better answer it.
Okay. Well, I think maybe both your organizations testified that you would like to see the eligibility expanded to non-residents, I believe was the term.
Non-citizens.
Non-citizen residents, is that?
Yes.
What's, so what's, so I'm assuming you're talking partly at least about COPA immigrants?
Yes, yeah, just to make sure that the language is inclusive, you know, COPA, folks from COPA are migrants, not immigrants. And so we just want to make sure that our language is expansive to themselves.
Okay, so my question with the COPA guys is, what are they, I mean, they're legal, they have legal status without doing anything, correct? What kind of, what kind of immigrant legal issues do they have?
Well, I'm not an expert in this, but I oftentimes it has to do with obtaining work permits and driver's license and things because we have not updated oftentimes the forms that they have to fill out on a regular. And so there is a lot of advocacy that happens at the departmental level to make sure that they have full access despite that they, despite the fact that they have that titular access.
Okay, so the expanded definition, is that really aimed at COPA or are there other groups that could, would be assisted, included and assisted by it?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Pat, and do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Ms. McManaman?
I, so, yeah, thank you. So, you know, in terms of deportation defense with respect to COPA residents, COPA residents can end up in deportation for very, very minor offenses. With representation, they may be able to assert a defense and remain here intact with their families. If you have a serious criminal offense, it will trigger automatic deportation, but there are limited remedies for some COPA residents for very minor types of offenses. Let's say petting misdemeanor theft defense, for example. In terms of other groups, I think non-citizens, just as Liza indicates, broadens it and makes it more inclusive, is specifically directed so that under this proposal, COPA residents can be represented. But, you know, the, the language in immigration shifts from time to time. And so by just having a broad, inclusive, non-citizen, you know, it, it will just help us represent more people with genuine legal defenses.
Okay, yes, I'll come to you next. So, but if we, if we just, if we changed it to just COPA, would you object to that?
Um. You know, I think just from a technical perspective, non-citizen, many COPA residents are referred to as non-citizens. And I think it would just broaden the door. So we can make sure that an asylum has come in as a visitor, for example, and is now submitting affirmative application for asylum or is put in deportation hearings can also be included in that group. It will just save any of those kinds of problems that a, that a potential funder may have in terms of what services can be provided.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair Sam Blaimen sure.
Yes, sorry. So either for Ms. Gill or Ms. McManaman. When I first read about the non-citizen residents, it seems to me it also would include the permanent resident status of non-citizens, which are the green card holders, for lack of a better term. Do they, do they, do they need the kind of services, the permanent non-residents, or do you folks cover them already?
So, so green card, green card holders are immigrants. They're lawfully lawful resident aliens and they are treated under immigration laws as immigrants.
Okay, so they're already covered under the term immigrant, is what you're saying? The permanent resident non-citizens. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, members? Okay, why don't we break recess briefly for decision-making? Recession. Back in from, for decision-making on our 930 agenda, which joint with the Human Services Committee on HB 1759, having confirmed with my colleagues, we'd like to pass this out with an amendment, a couple of amendments, we'll back in the appropriation for 250,000. Will co non-resident, non-citizen residents from nation comprising the compact of free association? Yep.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And that's it. Questions or concerns? If not, Chair for the J C vote.
Members voting on HB 1759, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Acasio?
Aye.
Senator Gabbard?
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Lee is excused. Senator Favela is excused. Recommendation adopted.
Okay, well, Human Services, same recommendation. Senator Ms. Lucha for the vote, pass with amendments.
For Committee on Human Services, Members, we are voting on HB 1759. Chair recommends pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Ihara is excused. Senator Acasio?
Aye.
Senator Ms. Lucha votes aye and Senator Bavela is excused. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
All right. Thank you very much, Members. That concludes our 930 agenda. We are adjourned on that agenda. Okay, coming back in on the 931 judiciary-only agenda. We had taken some testimony already. I would like to back up to HB 980 for a second. DHS apparently is here. Do you want to testify on HB 980?
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee, Lisa Amador, Adult Protective and Community Services Administrator. DHS rests on our written testimony in support and I'm available to answer any questions any of you might have. Thank you.
Remember, so, so we do have someone to ask questions for on HB 980, if there are any questions. Sure, I don't have any. All right, I don't have any questions either. Thank you so much for, for coming in. We will move back to HB 1536, which is this is the Judiciary, Judiciary Supplemental Budget, and we had taken some testimony on that already. Next up is Jim Gagny or Melania Fujimori, kind of, or or Angel Lovett, Director of Finance for Legal Aid Society. And none of them seem to be here, but they support it. Okay. Next is Craig Arri for the Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Next is Shannon Sheldon for the UIC President and White State Bar Association in support. Robert J. Leclerc for White Justice Foundation in support, Joseph Cardoza, White Access to Justice Commission in support, Stanley Roy. Hawaii County Bar Association. And also Michelle Oishi for Hawaii County Bar Association, also in support, and Mr. Roy was in support as well. That's all the testimony we have on the judiciary budget. Any questions, Members? See. Okay, we don't have any either. Let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is HB 2026. This defines board business and informal gatherings allows the board to prepare and circulate amongst members as statement on a position previously adopted for purposes of submission to legislature. Outlines and board packets must be available and would apply sunshine law to all adjudicatory functions concerning land use. First up on 2026 is, who are you, for DLR? Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members, good morning. It's nice to see you all in person again. The Department has found on its testimony, but I just wanted to point out that we are asking clarification on Section 6, the adjudicatory, including sunshine for adjudicatory functions. We'd like to point out that unlike the LUC, the Department of Land and Natural Resources, our board has a 96, has a, has a hearing first under sunshine with our board. And then if it's contested, it goes, the contested case is under 91, which is not subject to sunshine. So in our opinion, the public has adequate opportunity to make their position heard on, on a subject that's going to contest a case when we have our board hearings. And so we don't have to do it for both is, is our position. Thank you, and I'll be here for questions.
Great, thank you. Next is Cheryl Kakazin Park for the Office of Information Practices.
Not present, Chair.
With comments. Next is Heather Kimball, Hawaii County Council, a member of District 1, in support. John DeFree for Hawaii, Freeze for Hawaii Tourism Authority with comments. Douglas Miller for Leader Women Voters in support. Brian Black for the Civil Law Center for the Public Interest in support. Zoe Marita for Hawaii Chapter, the Hawaii Chapter of the Society of Professional Journalists in support. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 individuals in support, one individual with comments. And Hawaii State Association of Counties in support. And that's all the testimony we have in 2026. Members, any questions on, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to just? Okay, come on up. Don't see on the list, but oh, there you are. I'm sorry, I just skipped right over you. My bad.
That's all right. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We support HB 2026. We worked with a coalition of groups to help craft this bill, so we do support this measure. We specifically support Section 7, which provides that board packets are to be distributed in advance of board meetings. We believe that this will actually help boards and commissions know what's in the board packets. And we also believe that this will actually help the public. We do know that this bill provides that board packets are to be distributed 24 hours in advance. But another bill that was a Senate bill, Senate Bill 2143, provides that board packets are to be distributed 48 hours in advance. We do prefer the 48-hour provision to the 24-hour provision that gives boards and commissions more time to review materials. And some of it are quite voluminous and it gives the public more time to review material. So if that could be an amendment to this measure, we prefer that. And we also support Section 4 of this measure, HB 2026, which allows the public to testify after each agenda item. Instead of limiting the public to testify at the beginning of the agenda. I recently attended an election commission hearing, which only allowed the public, me, to testify at the beginning of the agenda. And then when there were concerns raised during other presentations, during the middle of the agenda, they would not allow me to speak. And I had to look up email addresses to, to email staff to raise my concerns, which was actually quite difficult to do while monitoring the hearing and then trying to email my concerns. So thank you for hearing this measure and hearing our concerns and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. The Members, that's all the testimony we have on 2026. Any questions on this one? So I guess for Ms. IU and Ms. Ma, why don't you both come up, except for only one chair? Okay.
Thank you so much.
So regarding the exemption from the sunshine law requirements for boards exercising adjudicatory functions, the exempt boards, the exempt boards are governed by the Administrative Procedure Act. As has been noted, doesn't, doesn't the APA require public notice and other requirements similar to the sunshine law, I guess, from Ms. Ma first?
Um, I, I will actually defer that question to the Leader Women Voters who strongly wanted the adjudicatory function, land use commission to be covered by the sunshine act itself. I don't participate in land use commission proceedings for Common Cause.
Do you happen to know Ms. IU or is it?
The land use, I, I don't know what the AP does, but the land use is subject to both.
Your, your, the DLR procedures are covered by both.
The DLR procedures do not cover both. Our, we, our board doesn't have the adjudicatory needs, we need under sunshine.
I see.
So our board, and then when it goes to a contested case, it
But so sort of during the process, you have both sunshine and APA?
If you go to a contested.
If you go to a contested case, okay. Yeah, it's not at all clear to me which, what adjudicatory functions we're talking about on land use. Because you guys have some of them at DLR and I guess the land use commission has some.
Land use commission is already, is already subject to both tort procedures and sunshine.
Is it the same process as DLR where they, no?
Because they only have one meeting.
But they had, but they take public testimony.
They take public testimony at the beginning.
At the beginning.
That, but, that they do, and then they close the testimony and they have a
Okay, okay, thank you very much, Members. Any other questions? Okay, if not, we're going to recess this one and go upstairs and do our joint hearing with CPN for recess and one. Welcome back to the Judiciary Committee 931 agenda. We just finished up HB 2026 relating to board meetings and informal gatherings, Chapter 92. Now to HB 2213, this establishes the misdemeanor offense of theft of mail at the state level. First up on this measure is Lauren Nakamura, Deputy Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes and Members of the Committee, Lauren Nakamura, Deputy Attorney General for the Department of the Attorney General. The Department supports HB 2213 for the reasons stated in our written testimony and I will remain available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gerard Silva in opposition, Ethan in support. That's all the testimony we have on HB 2213. Members, questions? Senator Gabbard?
Yeah, for the AG. Does the value of the mail or the package stolen increase the, the charge from a misdemeanor to a felony?
At this, the way the bill is written, no, it does not. This bill postulates that no matter what the value of that package is, it would be punishable as a misdemeanor offense.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Members, are there questions? If not, I'd like to follow up on Senator Gabbard's question. So what you could charge under a different, you could charge under theft if it was, if they knew it was valuable? I mean, that's, I guess that's part of the problem with mail is you don't know what the value is, right?
Yes, and that's actually why it makes it particularly difficult to charge such cases under the theft statute. Because pursuant to a state law case called State versus Mitchell, the, the prosecution is required to prove that the defendant intended to steal the statutory about, the statutory value pursuant to the theft count. So for theft in the first degree, they would have to know that it's about $20,000. Theft in the second degree, they would have to know it's $750 or less. In that situation, because it's a, a package or an envelope, number one, it's very difficult to tell from the outset what is the value of that package as you're, say you're driving by. Additionally, the contents of mail specifically, for example, your tax returns or things like that, they don't have a specific value, but they are incredibly valuable. Which would, but those are the reasons why we have difficulty pursuing these types of cases under a typical theft statute.
And the way, and the way you read this bill, it's not just the USPS, it's also other common carriers, is that correct? So UPS, FedEx?
Yes, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, the, it, it matters only that they be determined to be a common carrier. So yes, Senator Rhodes, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? If not, thanks for being here and we'll go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is HB 2416. This informs the public of the true source of dark money contributions by requiring Section 501(c)(4) nonprofits to disclose the name and address of donors. We donate an aggregate of more than $100 with certain exceptions. First up on 2416 is Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. Morning again. Thanks for hanging around.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We're providing comments with concerns about this bill, HB 2416. Our comments have to do with that it doesn't really address the dark money that's in Hawaii politics. Common Cause is a strong, strong proponent of campaign, campaign finance reform and reforms that actually target the dark money in our politics and our election system. This bill is only going after C4s that participate in electoral, in our, in our elections. And so, Common Cause, we are a C4, but we do not participate in electoral politics. We do not, we are nonpartisan. So this bill will actually only target very, very small fraction of what is actually happening, happening in our election systems. It's actually going after C4s that have to register as non-candidate committees. And so that's very small minority of who actually participates in our elections. This will actually just drive money to LLCs, unions that are also nonprofits, chambers that are also nonprofits. So I'm not exactly sure what the purpose of such a narrow bill that says it's actually targeting dark money when it doesn't really do much. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a strange bill. We don't really understand. It just drives money to elsewhere and hides money in our system. Those, those are our concerns about this bill. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you for that Common Cause testimony.
Next is Wayne Chung Tanaka for Hawaii, Sierra Club Hawaii, sorry. There you are. Good morning.
Yes, no present chair.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Not present. Okay, they're in opposition. Gary Cam, Campaign Spinning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Gary Cam, I'm with the Campaign Spinning Commission. The Commission appreciates the intent of this important disclosure bill. The Commission believes that transparency and political spending is one of the primary goals of campaign spending laws. We, the Commission does have concerns, which is stated in our comments. And I will just mention two of them, and the first one is the And I will just mention two of them. And the first one is the the disclosure of a hundred dollars, of more than a hundred dollars donation. We believe that that amount is too low. The case law, the first circuit case law that is relied upon for the proposition that you can get. You can reach the donors of nonprofits in campaign spending. In that case, the, the amount was more than a thousand dollars. That's where it started. You know, I you read articles on dark money, especially at the federal level. There's really no discussions of a hundred dollar or more contributions, you know, they're talking about. And I know it's on a small scale in Hawaii, but you know, you're talking about oil magnet brothers. Billionaire brothers donating millions of dollars to these nonprofits for political spending. Or a hotel owner in Las Vegas, a billionaire again spending. Well, actually, I guess he passed away, but spending again millions of dollars on for nonprofits to do political spending. And the other point I want to make is I don't believe we should be repealing paragraph six and seven in section six of the bill, which is pertaining to electionary communication. Those provisions will have you report whoever pays for the electionary communications. And I, I think I would submit that's even more important than getting random donors of over a hundred dollars to be reported when their donors might not have been used for the ads. I see a lot of times.
Thank, thank you very much. Next is Candace Park, Deputy Attorney General. With comments Joshua Wish for ACLU of Hawaii. Also with comments Deborah Zeisman, Executive Director of Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks in opposition. John Bickel in support and Diane Ware in opposition. That's all the testimony we have on HB twenty four sixteen. Members' questions. Sir Casio.
Mr. Cam. Yes, I'm wondering if you can answer why this required disclosure would not be applied equally to all nonprofits and, and including Chamber of Commerce union. And, and even why it's not applied to then profit making businesses and organizations.
Well, by, well, I guess you realize that by, by the very terms of the bill, it only applies to nonprofits, so. It only applies to five oh one C fours. So you're asking me, why doesn't it apply?
Okay, like I, I guess maybe more, the question would be more better presented. If it's going to apply to five oh one C four, why wouldn't we also apply it to Chamber of Commerce and unions in the same manner?
Well. Well, the bill identifies a problem and that, and that problem would be five oh one C four, it's taking part in our electoral process by funding ads and all of that. So I mean, that does address a problem. Whether or not it goes far enough, you know, it probably doesn't. I, I, I believe the Chamber of Commerce, which is a a C six, I think. I think they did participate in, in one of our elections. And I think it was a ballot issue. And I guess we know that unions also fund candidates. I, I, I'm not sure if they do more direct support or independent independent ads. I have to, I would have to look that up. But I mean, how, how far do you want to take it, right? Every, I, I, if you're a member of the union, you're required to pay dues. Is that you want them to disclose their, the members that pay dues and the dues are all set, right? You're not, you're not going to pay more dues just so that you can help fund a political ad or a candidate.
Right, right. So I guess in some ways that's similar, except for that, you know, if you see through, C four. You might be, you know, it's a voluntary donation as opposed to a union which is going to mandate membership dues. But in a similar respect, those that are donating to a nonprofit may also not want their everything, you know, publicized and are not necessarily agreeing or disagreeing to a certain campaign ad, for example, but okay, well, I, yeah.
Okay.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Let's back up a bit. Wayne Chung Tanaka is here from Sierra Club. If you would still like to testify, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Kilkukalaua, members of the committee, Wayne Tanaka with the Sierra Club of Hawaii. We are, you know, we do appreciate, I think, the intent of this measure to kind of, you know, reduce the influence of money in political campaigns. However, we, we think there may be a number of unintended consequences associated with this measure. We, you know, we do talk in our chest, written testimony about, you know, the substantial amount of volunteer effort that's put into our endorsement process that we do believe helps provide a service to the community in helping informed voter participation at the polls. I, I will add that, you know, there, there actually is some constitutional issues as well with recent Supreme Court opinions. Looking at donor disclosure laws in California and finding them unconstitutional, given the impact on the association of rights of donors. So I'm happy to answer any questions and others we respectfully ask if the committee hold this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, okay, back to questioning. Members, any other, any further questions? For Mr. Cam, I have a follow up from Senator Casio. Yes, so in the case of a, of a union, isn't it pretty clear where the money's coming from? I mean, they're not. It, it comes from the union or it comes from the members and that's it.
I, I would agree with that statement.
And same with the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, the Chamber of Commerce has a membership and presumably, I mean, I don't know. Maybe that's not an accurate assumption, but I, I would have thought that the, the money would have come from the members of the chamber.
Yeah, so there, the, I, you know, someone from the chamber said they can correct me, but I believe you have to pay a membership fee to be in the chamber. And I, I believe as a C six, they can also accept donations. In addition to membership dues.
Okay, so conceivably they could have. I mean, I think, well, I guess the other question would be, is it fair to say that for the most part, sort of traditional players in the political process, like the chamber and the unions? They set up independent PACs and, and funnel their money that way, or if they have independent expenditure campaigns like PRP did a few, you know, the, the famous one that PRP did a few years ago. That's an independent organization, right?
That PRP was an independent organization, correct? I, I believe the Chambers PAC was an independent organization for the ballot issue spending. But you know, for the chambers, though, you can look up to see who their members are. And again, if someone from the chamber can correct me. They, they may, if they have contribution, they may draw from a broader a group other than just their members. I, it seems unlikely, but.
No, it seems like, it seems like a possibility. Yeah. A more technical question. So you had wanted to you'd mentioned that you'd wanted to not share, let's see. Well, you think the trigger should be higher, which I agree with. Except there, and then the amendment on electioneering communications, you wanted to keep that pretty much the same, but put in a separate section. It's not a section, a subsection or paragraph or whatever it's called at that level. For five oh one C four, so it would be its own. The specific provision, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be a new paragraph eight and I, and I put down what I, I, I think it should be in, on page two of my testimony. And that to make it consistent with the treatment of the disclosure of donors made i- in the contributions report also. And I, I think it's very important that we do not repeal paragraph six and seven. Because those paragraphs are directed towards a disclosure of people who actually paid for the electionary communications or ad and, you know, whether or not that occurs a lot. Seldom. Ten times, you know, that, I think that's very valuable information. More, I think it's more valuable just getting a hundred dollar, a hundred and one dollar donors to a nonprofit that that buys an ad whose donor, whose donation may not have gone to paying for the ad at all.
Yeah, can I, so then you had a more technical amendment, you said the disclosure date definition on the page eighteen should be raised to the two thousand dollar threshold.
Yeah.
And then there's an additional disclosure for late expenditures where you'd have to do the same thing, I guess.
Yeah, so the Commission, what's the, what's the bill?
What's the two thousand dollar amount about? What's that connected to?
That was the original amount and we just felt that, you know, we've, we've been going through all these elections where non candidate committees have been filing these statements and you know, everyone's used to that amount and.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine. I just was curious. So it doesn't have anything to do with the, the trigger amount. So if it's a if it's a hundred dollars or ten thousand dollars, it doesn't matter for this purpose. It's, you wanted a two thousand.
Right, so that's the only threshold amount that's been in existence so far.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Members, any other questions? All right, thanks, Mr. Cam for being here. We'll go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is HB fourteen eighty six relating to theft. Men's the offensive theft in the first degree is specifically include theft of a motorcycle or motor vehicle or motorcycle. First up on fourteen eighty six is Alan Komagome for the Public Defender.
Not, not present chair.
Hi, good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'll be standing in for Mr.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Public Defender, Assistant Public Defender Lee Hayakawa, the Office of the Public Defender. Respectfully opposes HB fourteen eighty six HD two. We will stand on our written testimony and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, oh, that's you next, Kelvin Walgen, Prosecuting Attorney for the Hawaii County Office of Prosecuting Attorney. Good morning. Can't hear you. There you go.
Is it coming through again now?
Yep, we're good.
Good morning Chair, Committee members, Kelvin Walgen, Prosecuting Attorney for Hawaii County. So I'll stand on my written, written testimony and I remain available for any questions that you may have. Model for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much. Next is Councilmember Susan L. K. Lee Loy for three. In support. Jean Miskovich, Hawaii, obviously the mayor for Hawaii County, also in support. And let's see, Dr. Huleka Goro Inaba, Councilmember for Council District Eight, North Kona, Hawaii County. In support, Herbert Tim Richards III for Hawaii County Council and support Jared Hiromoto, Captain Criminal Investigation Division for Honolulu Police Department. Also in support. Okay, then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Roughly sixteen individuals all in support. That's all the testimony we have on HB fourteen eighty six. Members' question on, questions on HB eighteen fourteen eighty six.
So, yeah, I have a question, just to clarify, Chair, I'm looking on the, the bill. It also includes property or services, the value of which exceeds twenty thousand dollars. So presumably if a vehicle was over twenty thousand dollars and it was stolen, would already be included in this in this current statute. Is that correct? Just adding it, so it would be basically motor vehicles or motorcycles. They don't already come under.
I think the person that asked that is the prosecutor from Mr. Walton.
Oh, yes. Aloha, yeah.
Senator Casio, yes.
Okay.
This, the intent of the bill is to add a subsection for a motor vehicle and or motorcycle. It's structured with that intent so that there wouldn't be a valuation requirement for law enforcement.
Okay. So it's already encompasses ones that are twenty thousand dollars or more anyway, but we're basically just taking that out and essentially including anything under twenty thousand dollars as far as vehicles.
That's correct, Senator, including motor vehicles valued under twenty thousand.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? If not, let's go and move. Thank you for being here. Let's go and move on to HB fourteen fifty five relating to robbery in the first degree. This men's the offensive robbery in the first degree to include being armed with an electric gun. On fourteen fifty five, first up we have Michael I. Rice. Good morning.
Hello, centers. I stand in full support of this bill. This adds penalties to those who would misuse tasers for crimes, which I believe is a much more beneficial to the people than it would be to simply begin a deposto ban of tasers from being carried in certain areas, which is what the next bill is about. Then I will stand on my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Todd Yukutake. Good morning.
Good morning Judiciary Committee. Todd Yukutake, and I support HB one four five five. We pushed really hard to get electric guns legalized in Hawaii for self-defense. And at the same time, we want to make sure that criminals don't use it for violent crimes. So that's why I support this bill. At the same time, we just want to make sure that while I support upgrading the charge for using electric guns in crimes. There's other common items that are more dangerous than tasers and can do more harm to people like knives and baseball that. So just wanted you to keep that in mind at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Brad Nakasato, Major Criminal Investigations for Honolulu Police Department. In support. Okay, that's all the testimony we have on HB fourteen fifty five. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. See how much time we got. Let's at least start on HB seventeen thirty two since there are people here to testify on it. Let's go ahead and start with Todd Yukutake, since you're here. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to finish today. That's why I'm doing it this way.
Thank you. Morning Judiciary Committee, Todd Yukutake.
Forgot to tell what people, what the bill was. This prohibits individuals from carrying electric gun in or near certain sensitive locations with exception. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Todd Yukutake oppose HB one seven three two. Because it, it'll hurt the people of Hawaii trying to use tasers for self-defense. I'm a federal protective security officer at the federal building, so I'm the one who does the screenings. You know, screen x-rays, metal detectors, things like that, armed on the grounds. We prohibit electric guns on federal buildings. But it doesn't work for Hawaii state offices because we have a lot of armed security everywhere. We do x-ray and metal detector screening, so those things can come in. So basically what I'm gaining at is a sign will prevent good people from being able to bring electric guns into buildings like that, but bad guys can still bring you know, weapons and electric guns into the building unless you screen for it. So it puts a disadvantage on good people. Another thing is, I feel sorry for the people that I deny entry or having these things because I know that they carry it for self-defense. They come to the federal building like on a bus. They can't have it with them. And some of them, you know, have to wait alone at night at a bus stop. There's a lot of crimes, as you've seen, stabbings, beatings, robberies everywhere. So this bill would prevent people from being able to defend themselves to and from the place of work, government offices, things like that. And as you know, there's a lot of crime in the area. So it's kind of a feel-good law. And that's why I oppose it. I do have some crime maps on here for your areas. downtown Honolulu, I can't expand the map out because exceeded the one thousand crimes limit on this program. And I guess even Honolulu has too much time for the app to handle. But as you know, there's a lot of crimes even on government properties.
Okay, sorry, your time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I oppose this bill.
Okay, let's see. Yeah. Uh, let's see, we got, I'm going to try to pick the ones that were here in person. Kate, are you here? She was in support. And then we had Jerry Ewan for the Pool Rifle and Pistol Club. There you are. Morning.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair. I'm Jerry Ewan. I am the president of Pool Rifle and Pistol Club. I'm also the head coach for the Sacred Hearts Air Rifle, Precision Air Rifle Team. One of the things besides my testimony I want to talk about is when we practice, I have twenty-four girls from four to seven P M over at Wailai Avenue at Sacred Hearts. They practice inside the cafeteria. And it gets dark at night. Then the way after we finish practice, I wait around for the parents to come pick them up. And I'm not sure if you've been there at night. It's been, it's a very sketchy place. So sensitive places many times are those places also that a means for non-lethal self-defense is needed. And tasers, uh, electric guns, there are that alternative. Pepper spray, that's another alternative. But having more tools in toolbox usually helps out. Um, addition, as Mr. Yukutake said, yes, crime is on a ride. We see it. Uh, if you just look around the state capital itself, you can see homeless planted there. They've been stabbedings, shootings. So the general public, the law-abiding citizen, needs some sort of means of self-defense and electric guns, tasers. They are that non-lethal form of self-defense. And it has to be with, on them. They can't run back to the car and get it. It has to be with them when they're at the bus stop, on the bus, dropping their kids off at school, picking them up for school or any other places that they go. Yes, there are some places where they should be prohibited.
Thank you very much. Your time's expired. Uh, okay, members in public, both, uh, we're not done with, uh, fourteen eighty-six, but we're running out of time and we need to make some decisions on the earlier bills. So we will reconvene on HB fourteen eighty-six. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Seventeen thirty-two. We're not going to. Ten thirty. Okay, so we'll roll this, the remainder of the testimony and the decision making for HB seventeen thirty-two until Thursday at ten. And my apologies for those who are sitting on Zoom, uh, wanting to testify, but we're, we're out of time. Okay, members, we need to vote on, um, these earlier bills as we can before caucus starts. So the first one up, let's, I'm going to take it out of order this time because the one bill that we do have to pass out today is the judiciary budget. And that's HB fifteen thirty-six. So the recommendation on this one is to ask with amendments on certain lump sum, uh, capital improvement project of three point facility statewide to cover smaller projects identified by the judiciary. And we'll specify those projects in the committee report. We'll insert appropriations to cover court ordered appointed guardians, adult items and attorneys at a, a two hundred thousand for each of those categories of, I mean, sorry, one hundred thousand of each of those categories for two hundred thousand for total. Use, uh, system-wide and correspondingly will cut five vacant positions budgeted for a total two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and ten from the bottom of the vacancy list. We'll add proviso allowing the judiciary to provide greater compensation regarding adult items and court-appointed attorney that are rated greater than the guidelines specified in section five seventy-one eighty-seven. And we'll note in the committee report that the substantial budget reductions that the judiciary has experienced recently, twenty-three thou-, twenty-three million, seven hundred thousand from physicals, twenty and twenty-one and a hundred and ninety-two vacant positions defunded, including twelve judges and eight. So recommendation on, uh, judicial budget, uh, HB fifteen thirty-six is to pass with amendments. Questions or concerns? If not, Chair.
Members, we're voting on House Bill fifteen thirty-six, HD two. The recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Casio.
Aye.
Senator Gabbert.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Lee is excused. Senator Favela is excused. Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. We'll go ahead and move back to the top of the agenda. HB nine eighty, this brought from the Department of Human Services, right of entry into vulnerable adults premises. Um, um, we put up a proposed SD on this one, which would uh, narrow the and it will allow for any employee in an investigation to enter a premises where there is probable cause to believe a vulnerable adult will be injured regardless of physical injury. Adding, uh, through caregiver neglect, self-neglect or by physical abuse. So it's a narrower version of the original bill, but just covers those situations. So recommendation is to pass with the proposed SD one plus any conforming language in the preamble that's necessary. Questions or concerns, if not, Chair?
Members voting on HB nine eighty, HD one, SD one, passing with amendments. For five members present, are there any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next up, uh, we'll go to HB twenty twenty-six. This defines board business and informal gatherings, allow the, allows the board to prepare and circulate amongst members. A statement on a position previously adopted for purposes of submission to the legislature under certain circumstances and outlines outlines in board packets must be available to interested party and applies sunshine law to all adjudicatory, adjudicatory functions concerning land use. Our recommendation is to go ahead and move ahead with some amendments. I'd like to, um, make it so that the, the, if, if the board uses a board packet, then they have to make it available in public at least forty-eight hours before, instead of twenty-four and the bill is currently written. And, but the board doesn't have to use a board packet if they don't want to. Um, I'd like to remove section six, which is, would have applied sunshine law to additional land use adjudications. I think that are actually pretty well covered already, uh, in terms of public input. So I'd like to remove that section. And, uh, we're going to make it effective upon approval as well. Questions or concerns?
A question.
Yes.
So, um, it needs an amendment for the testifying after each item or is that?
That's in the bill. So that's not an amendment yet. Other concerns? If not, Chair, um, twenty twenty-six was an amendment.
Members, HB twenty twenty-six, HD two, passing with amendments. With five members present, are there any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, HB twenty-two thirteen relating to male theft. This establishes a state misdemeanor offensive male theft. The only recommend, recommendation I would make is to make it effective upon approval. Questions or concerns? If not, Chair?
Members passing with amendments. With five members present, are there any reservations or no votes? Hearing none, recommendation adopted.
Well, thank you, members. Next up is HB twenty-four sixteen. This is a, a dark money bill for, uh, five oh one C fours. Uh, it's a work in progress. I would like to keep it going. Um, my recommendation would be to change the trigger from a hundred dot one, one hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars in section four, five and six. So we're really going after the big, the big money guys. And then accept the CSC amendment that, um, on the electioneering communications where they didn't, there were two, uh, subsections or paragraphs that they didn't want to change. So we won't change them and then we'll, uh, add in their language on, um, on elect, on electioneering communications, putting, putting nonprofits in their own paragraph. So trying to lump them all together with the other entities. And then I would also like to accept the CSC amendment that, about the disclosure date definition on page eighteen. We'll put in a two thousand dollar thresh, threshold for first disclosure and additional disclosures for later expenditures. But contrary to campaign spending, I'd like to keep the expenditure that the expenditures made date instead of when publicly distributed. Uh, this, we can debate this later, but public, I don't know, when I send out a campaign mail or I don't know when it's publicly distributed. I do know when I pay for it, so I'd like to leave that in here for now. Be some conforming amendments and we'll keep the bait, we'll keep the date banned. Questions or concerns? If not, Sir Keel Kohli.
Members, HB twenty-four sixteen, HD two, passing with amendments. With five members present, are there any reservations or no votes? Hearing none, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next up is HB fourteen eighty-six. This men's the offensive theft in the first degree specifically include theft of a motor vehicle or motorcycle. Regardless of value, uh, recommendation here is just to change it to an effective, uh, to effective upon approval. Questions or concerns? No, Chair.
Members passing with amendments. With five members present, are there any reservations or no votes? So noted for Senator Casio, all other members vote a recommendation adopted.
Okay, and then the next, thank you. Next is HB fourteen fifty-five. This men's the offensive in the first degree, robbery in the first degree to include being armed with an electric gun. Uh, recommendation here also is to amend it by making it effective upon approval. Questions or concerns? If not, Sir Keel Kohli.
Uh, members voting on HB fourteen fifty-five, HD one. The recommendation is to pass with amendments. With five members present, are there any reservations or no votes?
Reservations.
So noted. Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. So as I, uh, mentioned before, we didn't finish the testimony on, on HB seventeen thirty-two having to do with electric guns being banned from certain areas. Uh, we will pick that bill up on, uh, Thursday at ten o'clock and, uh, continue with the testifiers and make the decision. That's it. Thank you very much for being here. We're adjourned.